Good evening. Welcome candidates and fellow citizens to the League of Women Voters of Rose Point Forum for the Harper Woods City Council. Thank you to the Wayne County Community College for the use of this facility. Before we start our program, let's have a moment of silence in remembrance and honor of the citizens and first responders who lost their lives on September 11, 2001. My name is Lori Reed, Vice President of Voter Services. This forum is for the general election on Tuesday, November 7, 2023, and is being video recorded. The League of Women Voters of Rose Point will present this for viewing within the week on the League's webpage and YouTube channel. We ask that you now please turn off or silence your cell phone and devices. The League has gathered questions from the community via email over the last few weeks. Technically, this forum will not allow us to submit all of your questions to the candidates. If your question is not answered tonight, we encourage you to follow up with the individual candidates. Questions have been sorted for relevancy, redundancy, and slanderous content. The League is providing this forum as an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. Statements expressed by the candidates are neither endorsed nor opposed by the League. The League does not certify any candidate responses to questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at the forum. At this time, I would like to introduce Mary Zaler, League member and former Vice President of Voter Services, who will serve as our moderator tonight.
Thank you, Lori, and good evening, everyone. The League of Women Voters is a national organization whose mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation by citizens and government. The League neither endorses nor opposes candidates or political parties. We welcome all men and women 16 years and older to membership. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters of Rose Point, the format received by each candidate prior to the forum. I would like to introduce the League members that will be sorting as question sorters, timers, and volunteers. Julianne Phillips, Lori Reed, Judy Florian, Sue Acton, who is not here this evening, and Ed Trobridge, thank you for helping us tonight. There are five candidates for three open seats for four four-year terms, excuse me, for four-year terms. The candidates are in alphabetical order Mr. Curtis Brown, Ms. Cheryl Costantino, Ms. Teresa Foster, Ms. Jerianna Lefratt, and Ms. Regina Williams. Each candidate will have the opportunity to make an opening statement not to exceed two minutes. The order has been determined by drawing lots just prior to the meeting, beginning with number one going through number five, so that's the order that they will answer questions. The timer will hold up a card for 30 seconds remaining and a card indicating stop. When the time has expired, so then you are to stop and may finish that sentence and not continue on. Following the opening statements of two minutes, the candidates will be answering in alternating order written questions from the community. As moderator, I reserve the right to close discussion on a question. At the end of the question period, each candidate will have the opportunity to a two-minute closing statement in reverse order of the opening statement, so we will begin at this end of the table and go back for the closing statements. An important part of our format is that there are to be no questions or comments from the floor during the forum. All questions are to be asked by me from the written questions. Also, I'm asking that the audience refrain from applauding or otherwise automatically reacting until the end of the forum. We will begin with the candidates' opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes. We will begin with Ms. Lefratt.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Jerianna Lefratt, and I was appointed to City Council in January of this year. Four years ago, a city issue caught my attention. I attended a City Council meeting and since then have never missed a single meeting. I take my role of City Council person very seriously and always do my homework before voting. I grew up in East English Village, attended Bishop Gallery High School in Harper Woods, and am a proud alumnus of Central Michigan University. Fire up chips! Twenty-seven years ago, my husband Bob and I bought our first home in Harper Woods. In 2001, we moved to a larger home in Harper Woods where we raised our two sons and still reside. I am the manager of an art and framing gallery in Oakland County where I oversee the day-to-day operations. Over the past few years, I've cut back my hours at work, allowing me to devote more time to my City Council position and other volunteer opportunities in my community. In the past, I served on Monty PTO and chaired and co-chaired multiple committees at my son's schools. I volunteered for 17 years with the Harper Woods Little League. I volunteered at the Harper Woods Vaccine Clinic. I co-chair a Harper Woods charity drive, Operation Good Sheen. I am a lifelong member of St. Matthew, Detroit, where I serve on our Jazz Night Committee, our largest fundraiser. I also chair our St. Vincent de Paul Giving Tree. I served on the Harper Woods Beautification Commission and was recently appointed to represent Harper Woods on the Hound's Senior Services Work Group. I belong to the League of Women Voters and Monstern Demand Action. I am proud to have brought the Anti-Gun Violence Resolution "Wear Orange" to Harper Woods, where we're the first city in our local community to adopt the "Wear Orange" resolution. Thank you, and please vote.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Now, Ms. Costantino?
I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Foster. Sorry, Ms. Foster. Ms. Foster.
I'm Teresa Foster. First, I would like to thank you for the League Women Voters for this opportunity. I met my husband 30 years ago, and I've been a resident of Harper Woods for the past 20. We have built our lives here. I'm an active member of the NEDC. Through my involvement, I have witnessed firsthand the positive impact it has on this community. I'm the proud owner of the Halloween House on Woodland and Peerless. For years, I've transformed my home into a spooky and welcoming haven for trick-or-treaters and creating a strong sense of belonging and community development. I have fostered relationships and community connections with the city due to my husband's 20-year involvement on the Planning Commission. I've got to know people and different things about the city. Through my work experience, I have managed, I have management skills and communication skills, and I understand budgets. These skills will help us tackle the challenges that Harper Woods faces every day. I know everyone has issues with the city. We all have to band together as a community to get these things done. I don't want to stand by and watch these things happen. I want to be involved in making them happen. My top priorities are very clear: ordinance enforcement, community involvement, and keeping the residents safe and informed about what's going on in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. And now, Ms. Williams.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Regina Williams, and I'm ready for reelection for one of three seats on the Harper Woods City Council. I would first like to thank the Rose Point League of Women Voters for giving me this opportunity to address me tonight. I've been proudly serving as a City Councilperson for the city of Harper Woods for the past four years. Before that, I was elected and served for almost seven years on the Harper Woods School Board, serving as the first African-American president and also serving in the capacity of Vice President and Treasurer. I am a career educator, 28 years teaching mathematics and science for the Detroit Public Schools District. I'm also a former military officer, first lieutenant, who proudly served my country. I am very dedicated to my community and helping to move our community forward. I serve on the Charter Committee, and I'm also a member of AMT DMT. I strongly believe in giving back and doing whatever I can to improve our community and building a strong socioeconomic structure for all. I'm dedicated and hardworking and ask for your continued support. I'm Regina Williams. I'm looking forward to your vote for me on November 7th or by absentee ballot. Thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And now, Ms. Costantino.
Thank you all for coming tonight. My name is Cheryl Costantino, and I've been very involved in Harper Woods for about three decades. I'm a United States Army veteran. I have two master's degrees and have begun my doctoral work. I am a wife and mother. I have served as Mayor Pro Tim and Acting Mayor twice. I volunteer in the community through Harper Woods, my church, my daughter's church, in many aspects. I am on our union team in our building and a Detroit public school teacher currently. I take increasing our property values very seriously, to the point where I've bought some of the most horrible houses in Harper Woods that nobody else wanted and put in the effort and the money and the time and fixed those up. I've helped a lot of residents that have come to me with different problems. I've stepped up. I've got knowledge, a lot of knowledge in the city of grants. I'm FEMA certified, Community Emergency Response Team certified, search and rescue trainer. I've been involved in a bipartisan transportation team, the Site Transportation Team. Been involved with the NEDC, and I was the Chair of the Crime Reduction Law Enforcement Task Force. We put on a lot of workshops during COVID and involved with the Home Improvement Project or the Home Identification Project and worked with the Eagle Scouts. And I've worked on the ordinance committee with the rental regulation packet, so we've been really regulating the rentals. I've been Mentor of the Year. I've received Red Cross Life Saving Awards and awards for community volunteerism, but nothing brings me happiness more than helping in Harper Woods.
Thank you, Ms. Costantino. And now, Mr. Brown.
Good evening to everyone. I want to give thanks and praise to I Save It. I want to give thanks to the League of Women Voters. You have been doing great things for 103 years. I live in Harper Woods. I've been here for about eight years, me and my family, my wife. I have a son that's 19. I have a daughter, 37. She's expecting her first child, her first grandchild. I'm not very experienced in politics, but it's one thing I do know: I love where I live. And if I have the opportunity to serve Harper Woods as councilman, I'll think outside the box. I'll visit the people who's sick in our community, and I will also do the best I can to be an upright citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We will now go to the questions submitted by the public, and we will begin with Ms. Foster and go down the line, ending with Ms. Lefratt. The first question, and if you need me to repeat it, you will let me do that, and you will have one minute. Provide three reasons on why you want to serve on the Harper Woods City Council. Ms. Foster.
Thank you. First of all, I went to a City Council meeting to be connected to the decisions that shape our community, and unfortunately, I felt disconnected and hurt. So at this point, my life, I've decided to be involved in public service. I figured it's never too late to start. I want to bring our new perspective and innovative ideas back so I can work with each and every one of you to make sure that we do everything that's right for the city and the community of Harper Woods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Ms. Williams?
If you question, we'll return.
Yes. Provide three reasons on why you want to serve on the Harper Woods City Council.
Well, one of the reasons why I serve on the Harper Woods City Council is because I really believe in my community and try to make it better. When I served on the School Board for many years, I saw that, you know, all the changes that could be done and things that could be done better. I'm a very patient person, very level-headed person, and I'm very thought-provoking. I think a lot, and I'm a pretty good decision-maker. So that's why I ran for City Council, and that's why I want to remain on City Council, because I think I'm making really good decisions to help our citizens. And again, like I said, I'm very patient, and I'm a good listener, and I try to accommodate everybody and get along with everybody because it's a team effort. We have to all work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Costantino?
Thank you. Three reasons why I would like to serve on the Harper Woods City Council. I would like to continue to improve the quality of life in Harper Woods and to help protect our residents. I would like to share the knowledge and talents that I have and business skills and to give back to my community, helping people with their problems, especially with government issues, and do whatever I can to make people's lives easier and have a higher quality here in Harper Woods.
Thank you, Ms. Costantino. Mr. Brown?
I would like to be on the City Council because, first of all, I love my city, and I hate to see Harper Woods go down like other cities around us. And I'm a good person. I have a kind heart, and I'm willing to think out the box, and I'm the first person to be there whenever you need me.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and Ms. Lefratt.
My first reason is that I want to represent everyone in our community, not the people that just live on this side of the freeway and that side of the freeway, the entire community. I want to make change. When I was appointed, one of the things I went after is we need to strengthen our ordinances, and I'm still working on that. And then, I want to listen to our residents, and I listen to our employees and hear what they're saying and what they want out of us, because we represent you, not ourselves.
Thank you, Ms. Lefratt. We will now go to the next question, and this one will begin with Ms. Williams. Describe your qualifications related to budgets and policies and your engagement in local government.
Some of my qualifications for budget, I am a mathematics teacher. I teach statistics to high school students, AP Statistics. So I'm very good with numbers. When we're in our City Council meetings and we go through the budget, we go through it one page at a time and we're always looking real closely at the budget and how the funds have been given out. So I'm very good with budget. I'm very good counsel with listening to what's going on, and so I try to make good decisions. I try to be very informed. So I take my time. I never rush. I go through everything ahead of time, so I know what I'm talking about before I get to the council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Costantino?
My qualifications for serving on the Harper Woods City Council involving the budget, I have a business where I have eight properties here in Harper Woods, and I fix them up, and I try to do my best to make the community a better place, but that involves a lot of financial issues, a lot of keeping track of things, and that helps me just know better how budgets work and to be able to see things also from the other side of the residents, how the residents might feel about things. As far as the policies go, every single thing I do or choose affects me times eight because I have eight properties, but it also makes me think about how it affects you, and I think that's very important, especially when it comes to policies to regulating rentals and such. And the engagement in government, because I serve on both sides, as one of the consumers and as one of the council people, I can make more informed decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Costantino. Mr. Brown?
Well, I know I run my budget and my household very well. And as far as running the budget for the city, well, I haven't had that experience, but I'm pretty sure that I can do it. I'm very fruitful, and everything that we need to run the city, well, first of all, we're part of one body, and we all have to come together and make cuts where we need to make cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Lefratt?
As far as the city budget, what I do is do the research. I've gone over budgets for years. I sat at all these council meetings, went to budget meetings. I look at budgets of other cities and see where can we come, where can we spend, where can we save. At work, we have a very tight budget. We went through the housing crisis, and things went really down, and things are on the upswing, and that's the same way cities work. We have a city financial officer, and we rely on them and go over their budget. As far as policy, same thing. Do the research, see that we're following the law, and stick to it.
Thank you, Ms. Lefratt. I'm Ms. Foster.
My qualifications, my management skills come from my work experience to make sure that people get things done, and they're supposed to be where they're supposed to be at at all times. My communication skills, I listen to the residents. I know what their needs and wants are. So we have to make sure we talk to everyone and get the things done that are most concerning to all of our residents and all of our community. My budget, I work within an office environment, so I understand that when the money comes in, it has to go to certain places, and people understand that they're going to get paid and what they're being paid for. Policymaking, I have a lot of kids. I have to make them happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. I will now go to the next question. This is a two-part question. The first part, should changes be made in budgeting to increase the number of police in Harper Woods? And that's the first part, increasing the budget for police. The second part, one of the issues coming up for a vote in November is merging the firefighters with another city. What is your viewpoint on this ballot proposal? So one is increasing the budget for police, and the other is combining the firefighters with another city. And we will begin that with Ms. Costantino.
Okay, so should changes be made to increase the number of police? Fortunately, we have hired some new police officers lately, and we've also been able to increase our police officer salaries so that we're competitive, so that is why we've been able to hire some police officers. But it's definitely important to have a strong police department, and it provides for the safety of our residents, and that's my utmost concern. As far as merging firefighters with another city, I am still researching that issue. I do believe it's important to have firefighters that know the community, that when they get a call, they know where the streets are, they know what addresses to go to, so those things are important. The community did adapt pretty well to the new ambulance company, which we had to hire because a lot of our firefighters were getting injured, and so they helped that. But this is something that I am definitely exploring, and it's kind of a new issue that's come up.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Costantino. And now, Mr. Brown.
As far as law enforcement, we need them. They do a really good job. And the fire department, we do need to research it a little bit more, and we do need a fire department that knows the neighborhood, the addresses and the streets. That's very important. We have to research it a little bit more, but I'm all for more police.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And now, Ms. Lefratt.
So the question was, should we increase the budget to add more policemen? Our budget for the city of Harper Woods, 80% of our budget goes to police and fire. So if we can, I don't know what we would eliminate, but if we can do that, add some more policemen, I'm all for. For firemen, City Council at the last minute meeting, we just passed a study, the Winborn Study. We're paying $63,000 for a three-month study, which includes our Public Safety Director and our union representatives from the fire department and the firefighters to come up with the perfect plan for some type of a merger or fire authority. So when the study's done, we'll make that decision.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lefratt. And now, Ms. Foster.
Increasing our police budget, I know we have to have more police. We have to look into ways to increase our tax base because at this time, our budget is tight, and I understand that. So to increase our tax budget, our tax base is going to be one of our top priorities. Combining our fire department with Detroit, I don't agree with that. I think we should have our own fire department, because it's always nice to know that we have something of our own, and we need to realize that our fire department and our police force are supposed to be working for us, not for other cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. We will now begin the next question with Mr. Brown. Sorry, Ms. Williams, I'm so sorry. Please go ahead.
Thank you. By increasing the budget for police, I think if we're able to increase the budget to accommodate more police officers, we really would if we're able to. We don't quite have enough police officers or firefighters to truly make our city as safe as it could be. So if it's within a budget, I'm sure we already have probably done so, but it's really kind of difficult to do. Combining firefighters for another city to merge, there's a study that came out that showed us that we really need more firefighters. About minus, we only have two per shift, and that is not safe for our residents. If something happened, if one of the firefighters is not there, that's not enough. So we have to do something. It may not be merging Detroit, but it could be merging other cities like East Point or Secular Shores. So we're already researching that and trying to see what, you know, what's the best method that we can do.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We will now go to the next question with Mr. Brown. What is your experience in public service, specifically on Harper Woods committees, commissions, and our attendance at council meetings?
Well, I don't have very much experience in the political arena, but I attend council meetings. I was Little League manager, and I'm ready to get in the game. I'm ready to do whatever Harper Woods wants me to do.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Lefratt?
As I stated, a little over four years ago, I went to a City Council meeting, and then I never missed one, until the time I was appointed in January, and I've made every single meeting since then. I currently serve on the Beautification Commission, and I'm represented for the Hound.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lefratt. Ms. Foster?
All right. I'm a active member on the NEDC. I attend City Council meetings. I also attend the Planning Commission meetings. I go to the different events that's being held. I went to National Light Out. I also attended the Walkathon, which the NEDC sponsored. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. And now, Ms. Williams.
For public service, I've been a public servant for many, many years. I served seven years in the Harper Woods School District, and after that, four years for the city council. I'm a member of the charter committee, and also I support most of the events that the city has, or I go to the NEDC events, which was the Walkathon recently. I support GPOS. They had a breakfast, and I've gone to most of the events because I support what's going on within my city.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Costantino?
My experience with community service in Harper Woods, I have 28 years of public service here in Harper Woods. I have six terms as mayor pro temp. I was acting mayor twice. I have been involved with helping the city get grants over the years and referring the city for as much funding as possible whenever it was in my ability to do so. I serve on the ordinance committee, the interview committee, interviewing all the people to be on the boards and commissions. Coming into Harper Woods, I was involved with the homeowners for a better Harper Woods, and I've been involved with another homeowners group here in Harper Woods lately, being active with them. The NEDC, I've been involved with for many years, actually since the beginning, and I was chair of the Crime Reduction and Law Enforcement Task Force. I've been involved with a lot of parent organizations and a lot of school activities.
Thank you, Ms. Costantino. We will now go to the next question with Ms. LaPratt starting. How important is it to you to fill the vacant city manager position for our city, which has been vacant for three years, being a city manager, city council-run administration?
I think that at this point, Mr. Schumansky has been doing a good job. It may be time now that we need two opinions, that sometimes we're only getting, you know, one opinion, and it would be nice to have our chief financial officer and our city manager be two different people. But I still think that Mr. Schumansky has done a fantastic job the last few years, but it may be time for us to be seeking a new city manager.
Thank you, Ms. LaPratt. Ms. Foster?
I think it is very important to have a city manager. Mr. Schumansky is a very good one at this point, but he has other duties to do, and I think that it should be separated. We just have to find a qualified person, someone that has a knowledge of our city and can look at our budget and tell us if we have different ways to make things work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Ms. Williams?
I think it's very important to find a new city manager. Mr. Schumansky has done an excellent job. He took over as acting city manager when we lost ours, and he's done a very good job. He's a finance person, and he has so much that he has to do. I think the jobs should be separated, not where he could concentrate mostly on finances, which is his expertise. He's done excellent jobs as acting city manager, so I don't want to take anything away from him, but he's done a great job. But we really do need to get someone in there to be city manager. I've been on the interview committee for city manager, and it's very hard trying to find someone who's actually qualified to be a city manager. So that's been one of the issues that we've been having.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Costantino?
I do think it's important to fill the vacant city manager position. Acting city manager Schumansky is excellent with finance, and he's helped our city out financially very, very much. But some things have just kind of fallen aside that we need to pick up and clean up. We've been weak in some areas, and it's time to fill in the gaps. Ordinances, we need to be tougher on crime. We need to get our city back. Ever since COVID, there's just been a lot of things that we just haven't gotten back to 100% on. We used to have a task force that we worked with with other cities to find car thieves and other things, and I think we just need to get a lot of that back and get back to 100% again.
Thank you, Ms. Costantino. I'm Mr. Brown.
City manager is important. If you try to do too much, you wind up not doing anything. We need a city manager. We need these ordinance enforcers.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I will go to the next question, beginning with Ms. Foster. If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on firmer financial footing?
Financial footing. I know we have to find a different way to, or another way, to increase our tax base by bringing more companies into here, or more businesses into our city. We need to get rid of the vacant housing. We have to get more residents in those. I need our financial director back at where he belongs, so he knows he can do his job instead of both jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Ms. Williams?
One of the steps that we definitely need to do is bring more businesses, good businesses, into Harper Woods. We have some nice businesses that's opened up on Harper, but we also need some really good businesses open up on Kelly. We need to fill some of those vacant buildings that we have and get, you know, good businesses into those spots. Also, the residents, we have a quite few homes that are rental homes, and I think if we had more homes that were owned by our group of residents and not rented, that would help the tax base. And we're distant from our taxes, because some things, some of our taxes are very high. So if we can lower them, you know, some areas, you know, really look at it, see how we can lower it. So we need a good person to look at the finances real closely to see what can be lowered, because we have a high tax base.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Costantino?
Steps that we can take to put our city on firmer financial footing? We are actually improving financially. We have several businesses coming to Harper Woods. We're going to have some new houses built where there was a school, so we'll have some tax base, even though it's subsidized. But the absolute best way to improve our tax base is to increase property values, to make our houses desirable, to make sure that our yards are cleaned up, our ordinances are being enforced, and to make people want to live in Harper Woods. If our city is safe, it looks nice, and we have a lot of amenities, like cleaning up the leaves and things that a lot of other cities don't have, people are going to want to live in Harper Woods. And then when houses sell, the property values will increase, they'll become unkept, we'll get a lot more tax money that way. That is the best way to increase our financial footing.
Thank you, Ms. Costantino. I'm Mr. Brown.
We just simply need strong businesses, serious fundraising, and a taxpayer.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. LaPratt?
We need more businesses, and we need higher home values. We need a program, and I've talked to a local mortgage company where we can get our renters to be homeowners. Homeowners are very important. It's going to raise our tax base, it's going to make them take care of their homes. We need to raise some of our ordinances, but mostly, as everyone else said, we need more businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaPratt. We now go to the next question, and we will begin with Ms. Williams. A city council seat is traditionally nonpartisan. Some think partisanship has crept into our local races. Is this a fair statement? What would you do to address that?
Local elections, such as city council, is nonpartisan. There should be no distinction between whether Democrat or Republican, because we're all here for the same thing. We're all here to help improve our community, make it better for everybody, and it should not be, you know, Democrat or Republican. I think online, there's a lot that goes on of Democrats and Republicans, but it really shouldn't be. And I think most of the council are nonpartisan. I mean, we all share our own individual, our own individual, you know, whether we're Democrats or Republicans, but that should not be part of what we're trying to do as a community or as a city councilperson.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Costantino?
When residents ask me for help or to help them solve a problem here in Harper Woods, I don't ask them what party they are, I just simply help them. I do whatever I can. I put my residents first, I put all of you first before any partisan activities. I work on bipartisan organizations, bipartisan groups, especially the transit team, and this way we just have a well-rounded project that is influencing the whole southeastern Michigan, not just Harper Woods, but that helps everyone here in Harper Woods as well, because then people will be able to get to where they want to go.
Thank you, Ms. Costantino. Mr. Brown?
Love your time, just don't have a problem. You do things because you care, or you don't.
Thank you, Ms. LaPratt.
Local politics should be bipartisan. Have we seen some partisanship creep into local politics? Definitely, definitely in our city and in other cities. But as we all sit there as a team, that's how we need to think, that we're all working together and set aside our differences, come together across the aisle, and make decisions that are right for our entire community, not someone's community, our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaPratt. I'm Ms. Foster.
You're here to make our community better. We all have different views. We all know what we want in our city, whether we're Republican or Democrat, it shouldn't matter what side of the road you're on. We're all here for the same thing, Harper Woods, to make our community better. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to the next question, and we will begin with Ms. Costantino. What has been your position regarding legal marijuana stores coming to Harper Woods?
Lately, it's been very alluring to try to bring marijuana stores into your city to get government money or what have you. But we have to look at the long-range outcome from what happens with this. If we limit it, then we're not really affecting the future too much one way or the other. The gravy train that has been going on since the COVID money's been in, that's going to stop. There's going to come a time where the state and the national government have to tighten their belts. And so the money that's coming in for marijuana is going to be one of the things that are cut. So that should not be a reason why we have it. We also have to consider that these stores are going to be near somebody's house, and some people are going to be affected by it. So having unlimited marijuana stores is probably not the right answer for our city.
Thank you, Ms. Costantino. Mr. Brown?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What has been your position regarding legal marijuana stores coming to Harper Woods?
Well, I don't see no problem with it. We have liquor stores, and liquor does much more damage than marijuana. So if it's a revenue to be had, we surely could use it here in our woods.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. LaPratt?
I think there's been a lot of misinformation floating around the community about how this all started. I was not on council when it came about and it was voted, because of some legal consequences, that we would control the ordinance and open some stores. I did vote to limit how many stores we could have by putting a distance in between these stores. I think that we need to continue to let the residents know what the truth is and how this started and what's going to happen with these stores. It may not be what each of us want, but we're going to have to work together and figure out the best way to bring these stores to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaPratt. Ms. Foster?
I understand how upset the community is. I would also be upset if it was in my backyard or my side yard. And I also understand that revenue would help with the city. These businesses are best in industrial areas. As you look around, you can see in other cities, that's where they're at. Maybe we could, I don't know, but maybe we can put the brakes on it and rethink. Also, I know it was also voted on in the past, but I don't think the residents really understood where these businesses were going to be set up.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Ms. Williams?
I think it's a very difficult topic when you're talking about the marijuana stores in Harper Woods. The dispensaries is, having dispensaries, not just a regular store, could be at the Harper Woods when we talk about financial. Me personally, I'm not the biggest fan of marijuana. However, I understand it is illegal. It was legal, you know, voters voted for it to be legal. So because voters voted that way, they are coming, whether we want them to or not, they are coming. I think the best thing that Harper Woods did was to get committee together to investigate what we can do, you know, what's the best approach. And I relied heavily on why our committee came up, because they went over it for several months, a very long time, and trying to make the best decision for Harper Woods. There's no way that we're going to be able to stop it, because it was something that the state, people in the state voted for. We just got to do the best we can.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I will now go to the next question. What do you think is the number one infrastructure issue facing the Harper Woods? If someone came to you with a proposal to solve that issue, how would you evaluate whether or not that proposal was worth implementing? Would you like me to repeat it? Got it? Okay, I'll repeat it again, it's kind of long. What do you think is the number one infrastructure issue facing the Harper Woods? If someone came to you with a proposal to solve that issue, how would you evaluate whether or not that proposal was worth implementing? Can we begin with Mr. Brown?
I hear a lot of residents saying that their basements be flooded. And if that's the case, maybe we should look at that and try to come up with some kind of resolution for that. And speed bumps, speed bumps do work.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. LaPratt?
One of the biggest bills we pay is the Milk River bill. If somebody came to me and came up with a solution that somebody else is going to pay that bill, I'd go for it. But unfortunately, we have to pay the Milk River, it pumps all the water out of the city. So if I could fix one thing, it would be to have the state, to have somebody else pay that bill, and so we can keep our basements dry, but not have to pay for it.
Thank you, Ms. LaPratt. Ms. Foster?
I think infrastructure is a very important subject, something all cities need to do. At firsthand knowledge, there are orange barrels on my boulevard because the catch basins are failing. It'll take time, and again, it's necessary to keep that under control. Milk River is a big problem paying it, and I understand that it takes a lot of the budget. It's like when I sit in the council meetings, it's amazing how much they have to pay all the time. So I don't know about any other way to fix it.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Ms. Williams?
I think one of the biggest infrastructure issues we have, just like Ms. was saying, is the basements flooding. I know when we had that big storm a couple of years ago, my basement flooded, and I'm still today trying to clean up my basement and fix the walls, get the cunnel and try to get all the mildew and mold and all that stuff out. So it's a really big issue. So it's a really big issue. Part of it, I think, is the way the Harper Woods was built, you know, and where our backyards are. And so if that could be fixed in some kind of way so that basements would not flood, if someone brought to me a great solution, I would go for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams, and Ms. Constantino.
So I'm sure you've heard that the Milk River and water in Harper Woods is probably our biggest issue. We do have some smaller issues, like mechanical issues at the city hall and such that we're dealing with, but if someone brought to us a possibility for resolving the water in Harper Woods or resolving some of these issues, I would say go ahead and do a cost benefit analysis, and if we can afford it, to go for it. But right now, we're asking businesses and new housing projects to create their, to create their own drains and their own plans to deal with the runoff water, and that will decrease the demand for the Milk River and hopefully decrease your payments, all of our payments, to the Milk River, because it is a very hefty part of our budget. And we need to increase our representation on the Milk River Drainage Board. That's a real sore spot, that we only have a person like every other year to serve on that board.
Thank you, Ms. Constantino. We will now go to the last question before we go to the closing statements. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in Harper Woods? And we will begin with Ms. Leprat.
We have to listen to the residents. I know a lot of people, and I run one of our Facebook pages, so we can put issues out there, hear what the residents have to say. I can call people, I can email people, and I can listen to each person that comes to the microphone and hear what they want and make the decisions for the entire community. I think that one of the problems is that we need a lot of communication from, through the city, and revamping our website, putting some things right on the front page, so people are aware of what's going on, so they're not entering a council meeting saying, "How come I didn't know? Why has this been going on for two years?" So better communication with the residents through our Engage, and through, which is part of our website, and right on the front page of our website, I think is very important.
Thank you, Ms. Leprat. Ms. Foster?
Thank you. Yes, I do agree. We have to listen to the residents. We have to make sure that we band together, so we have a better community. We have to try to implement some of our ordinances, so our citizens don't feel like they're not being heard and they don't have a say. So the website would be a great thing, so they can make comments and so they understand what's going on in the city, just so they can come and talk to us and make sure that we understand how they feel.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Ms. Williams?
I think one of the ways that we can better involve our residents is to, of course, update the website, because if you go on our website, it's hard to find a lot of information. So really, they need to be updated. Also, we need to better inform our residents about what's going on, on our, not only our websites, but on websites in general. There's a lot of misinformation that goes out, so we need to make sure that the information that residents do get is actual information. We have the insider that has some information with it, but if we had something like our own newspaper or something, a newsletter that would go out, I think that would be very helpful to our residents. And also, we as city council need to make ourselves a little more available to our residents, where they can contact us a little more, a little more easier.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, Ms. Constantino.
There are several ways we can involve our residents in the decision-making process. Meeting with residents, meeting with groups, talking to people while you're out in the community, informing people what's going on, invite them to come to meetings, invite them to be part of our discussion groups, encourage people to get involved with our boards and commissions. We still have some spots open, like on the beautification commission and things like that, and to help the residents be part of the decision-making process in that way.
Thank you, Ms. Constantino. Mr. Brown?
All of these are good ideas, but maybe we can have a newsletter from the school to high school, have the students do a letter, some kind of information, newsletter or something, so we all can be informed of what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We will end this segment with the candidates' closing statements, each not to exceed two minutes. The order of presentation is now reversed from the opening statements, and so we will begin with Mr. Brown.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, this is the closing statement that you can give, not to exceed two minutes.
Harper Woods is a wonderful place. Now, if I was to be on the council, I would get out there personal, like I do, and spread the word. We have to let each and every citizen know that they're part of this one body. I'll even go on the other side of Harper Woods, which they call Harper Hood. We can't forget about them too, but we just have to be more about our business, get them out there and spread the word.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and Ms. Constantino.
There's some qualities you need to have to be a leader, and these are things that I've been really working hard on in the time that I've been on the Harper Woods Council. The first quality is you have to be brave. Well, you have to be brave just to put yourself out there, to be on the council, to get the petition signed, to come up and speak in front of you, but you have to be brave enough to make the tough decisions as well. You have to be strong. You have to be able to take criticism and at times threats. You have to consider the future, the effects of what we do now and where it's going to affect us 20, 30, 40 years from now, or what should we be doing now to help our city be at its best in the future. You need to be an independent thinker. If you're just going to do whatever's put in front of you or whatever's handed to you, you're just kind of like a lump of coal. You have to just think for yourself and take things into consideration, and sometimes you have to think differently. You can't always think like everybody else to do that. You have to be hardworking, help people resolve their problems, especially as it relates to government. You can't be afraid to get your hands dirty, get out there and do whatever it takes. You need to be knowledgeable. You need to know who to go for, for what, and if you don't know the answer to something, you need to know who to talk to. You have to be able to communicate, to be involved with the community, share information, listen to people, and you have to invest in the community. You invest your time, your talent, sometimes your funds, whatever it takes. You have to just do everything in your power to make this community a better place, and you have to love your community of your residents and sometimes put them first. This is something I've really been working on for the last several years, and I'd like to continue to serve, and I hope to get your vote for Harper Woods City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Constantino. Now, Ms. Williams?
My name is Regina Williams, and I thank you very much again for allowing me to address the community at this forum. First off, I love where I live. I moved here because I love the rest style houses and large yards, and my neighbors turned out to be great. I am on the city council because I believe in helping move this community forward. The city of Harper Woods is moving forward, and they have a lot of new initiatives. Commercial buildings are being built on the old Eastland site. We have upgraded all three of our parks, we redone Vickersville Street, and now we're planning to build a new recreation center for the public. I hope through this forum, you're gaining better perspective, how dedicated and committed I am to serving my community. It's your faith and belief in me that motivates me to continue to strive, to make decisions to move our community forward. I, Regina Williams, look forward to continuing to serve you. I'm a strong leader, dedicated to service, ready, resilient, and responsible. I'm ready to serve you for another four years. I am resilient, not giving up, and responsible for making good decisions to drive this community forward. As the dynamics of our community continue to change, so too must we have positive forward movement. Please continue to support me with one of your three votes for city council on November 7th. I believe in you, please continue to believe in me. Please vote for me, Regina Williams, ready, resilient, and responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And now, Ms. Foster?
My name is Teresa Foster. First, I'm committed to prioritizing the ordinance enforcement, ensuring that our community remains safe and thriving for all residents. Secondly, I believe in the power of community involvement. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and work side by side with all of you to address the challenges, big and small. I want to be the person that people feel that is approachable. You see me out there, come up and talk to me, say hi. Do you have any concerns? Come and talk to me about them. We'll see what we can do. I know we are, when I'm sitting there at the council table, that we're here to represent you, the community of Harper Woods. Once we have all the people in place on the council, the city is going to climb, grow, and shine. Thank you very much. Vote November 7th.
Thank you, Ms. Foster, and now, Ms. Leprat.
Thank you to the League for all you do to keep the Harper Woods voters informed. Thank you to all in attendance tonight and for those that are going to be watching at home. Oftentimes, we only hear the negatives about Harper Woods, yet our city is beginning an upswing. We are seeing the North Point development move toward completion. The demolition of Popeart School will be the start of the first new neighborhood in Harper Woods in decades. We are hopeful that new businesses want to locate in Harper Woods during this exciting time of new development. Kelly Rowan will soon be getting a facelift. The city is pursuing a grant for a highly needed community center at Salton Park. City council just voted to do a lengthy study to find the best solution to keep and improve our current fire department. Our taxes are high, and I want to be part of a team that brings constructive ways to lower taxes while keeping and improving city services. I want our ordinances to not only be enforced, but be tightened. I want our landlords to be held accountable. I want complete transparency from city government. I will continue to do my homework and share my research with my fellow elected officials. I hope I have your vote on November 7th.
Thank you, Ms. Leprat. So that ends that part of our program tonight. This forum will be available for viewing on the League of Women Voters of Grosse Pointe webpage and the YouTube channel, and our online voter guide covering this race is on vote411.org. So you can, these people have submitted answers to questions that have been asked of them. Everybody was asked the same question, and that's posted on vote411.org, and it's a very important place to gather more information, and that is linked to our website, which is theleagueofwomenvotersofgrosspoint.org. So if you Google or search for the League of Women Voters of Grosse Pointe, you will be taken to our, to our website, and this will be available within the week. This is invidiobract, if that's the right word, whatever the word is. It will be posted within the week, and so you can watch it again, or you can tell your neighbors, your friends, whatever, to also look at it. Election day is Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You can verify your voting registration status by calling your city clerk, or going to vote 411.org, or to the Secretary of State website. You can also vote absentee through the 8 o'clock on the day of the election. Before we adjourn, we have a short but important list of people the League would like to thank. First of all, the League members who have timed the event, sorted questions, and volunteered. You, the audience, are taking an interest in this important local election. And before I say thank you and good evening, finally let's show our appreciation for tonight's candidates for their commitment to public services.